Call this. Or call this February twelfth twenty four meeting to order. Ryan, you want to lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bay County Commission will now meet as a board of the equalization review. Eddie, do you have any petitions? Is there anybody in the room that has any petitions?
Anybody online? Gosh, this is a fully attended meeting.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to recess as the Board of Equalization review reconvene at nine eight M on February sixteenth. All in favor? Okay.
No, um, nothing else, Eddie? Okay.
Okay, we can mark him off for then.
So no exonerations ordered combined or divided refunds.
It's pretty good bit right there. Approval vouchers and invoices. Anybody have any?
They're listening.
No, there isn't none of this? Well, I didn't see any as well. Is there?
I didn't see him in the back. I didn't see him in the back of the engine.
Can we just do them next week since we have the matches on?
I know we can do that.
That's what I mean, Friday.
All right, Ruth.
Thank you. Thank you for doing one of these for every elected one to do it for the generals. It's already expanded areas to do emergency absentee ballot. Someone will play hospital. After your request absentee ballot, but they're going to be there on election day. So if you feel the this expand that to nursing homes and people that are in.
When will the people be named that'll be doing this?
Um, when you guys on Friday get out for the number of coworkers that we need, that'll be listed on that list. But if you have a chance to know, I definitely, I think you guys will nominate or point all the election officials on the March sixth meeting.
That sounds right.
So, um, so that's when hopefully they will give us names. So we'll talk somebody, but yeah.
Okay, I know we're meeting on the twentieth of this month.
By Friday with the the order act telling how many you need at the very latest of people already have.
I'll motion to approve the order.
Second, all in favor?
Get you good ones. So that's kind of.
All right, the next thing is the re grant extend. It says letters, so it's upon. This is requesting to extend the amount of time we have to spend the dilapidated housing grant. Yes, only we approve.
Second, all in favor?
And then you had requested a letter to run on Lively.
Thanking him for forty plus years of service.
I'll motion to approve.
Check on favor.
Last annuals the software systems. She said all of the IBM contracts are where they have that clause basically that says you can, if you don't fund it, then the contract's canceled. So you can do the three year. Three year so Jim Jones about a hundred dollars a year.
Do they put the pause in there? I'm sorry.
Now this is just a little notice on this. I don't care how we do this.
I like the fact that the three year saves a little bit of money.
Oh, yeah, I do too. I'm just, I just want to make sure because we can't technically enter and go through your contract. So there's supposed to be some language in there. Same that we can remember. Um, I, I think we can vote in theory and then we can sign the contract unless it's amended. So I knew we, so did you say approved, a move that we approved the three year agreement with the modification?
I'll get that.
Second, all in favor?
That's all I got. I know we've got ten minutes.
You don't get ten minutes?
Um, well, Brian's here. You want to do camp store budget?
I mean, yeah.
I'm I'm texting them now.
Okay, New River Transit.
Yeah, New River Transit's here.
You're here? We can get you in and out. Lucky.
Well, I'm glad y'all were here last week because it's dragged on and on because we had so many public.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Pedro Lilly that was sent to help them and thank you guys for being there today. I had sent some documents over to you guys to view, but there are brochures. So I went ahead and brought those. So, um, a little backstory, this um, New River Transit Authority in twenty fifteen, whenever we become urbanized. So when we first were established, you have to say Spanish toll credit. And that was wanting to help offset our local match. And during that, we lost that, which was because of COVID, it was okay, but we went back after COVID had kind of tamed down. And then they told us we couldn't have them anymore. The transit agencies that were hitting the toll credit funds, no longer getting them. They're just for state projects and road projects. So now we're looking to make up our local match. So in August of last year, we started going around talking to all our cities and municipalities about our funding local match situation. Of course, you have to have fifty percent of your federal drawdown, has to have fifty percent of local funding for us to operate and pull those funds down. Um, so I didn't want to come just to ask for an increase. Also wanted to talk about our lovely expansion. It happened in, um, April of twenty twenty two. We had three routes and now we have five routes. We ran for a little less than eight hours. Now we run for twelve hours. Um, we had so Bay County specifically the blue route had two runs from Crestwood Mall to here and back. Before the pandemic, now we do four. So we're getting a lot more, um, rider ship. Back in twenty twenty, we had to order larger buses for the blue route specifically because our twelve by twos weren't enough. So we got sixteen buses. All of our vehicles are ADA certified, so they're wheelchair accessible. And now I made some charts for you and it shows the blue route and the rider shift that has increased. Um, then the SOR program is.
Can I ask you a random question before you get further? When you upgrade, um, buses, what do you do with those old ones?
So we, New River Transit doesn't have any. That helped me mint away if we want. Um, we're building our fleets still. But Raleigh County Community Action is our contractor. They run the services, have to drivers. And they always put them up where if they don't, if they don't, um, pass it down to like the homeless shelter, the housing.
Well, we're interested in it. We, we, Bay County needs one or two vehicles like that for our youth programs for our, um, to transport kids to teen court and stuff throughout the county. So if you have something like that, we'd definitely be interested.
DRC too.
Yeah, and our day report center. I mean, we, we have a need for something like that rather than a van.
Um, well, if community.
Especially transport kids.
When community action goes to retire their next set, I'll be sure to give you guys.
Please do, please do keep this in mind. If you, if you reach out to Ruth, she can.
Okay.
Get on it because.
Absolutely.
Sorry about that.
No.
No, it's okay.
All fancy and becca, please. So one of the other charts is our SOR program. Our SOR program provides transportation for anyone in recovery. So that's for treatment, that's for support. That's for, for the doctor regular, like there's no restrictions. Um, we do appointments and pick people up directly where they need to go, but we recently started a bus pass. So as long as you have, um, they call in, they say directly to get packed only that they are in recovery. Um, we like to follow up to make sure that just speaking to a counselor for someone in their life. And then we give them a bus pass and they're able to travel for free. That is because DHHR has a contract with us. Yeah, so they are funding us for that, for reversing this. Um, I have the rider ship of that on the chart. I also have the operation costs and it's how they have increased over the years. Um, after COVID, when we got our first set of buses, it went up sixty four percent. So prior to COVID, we spent seventy thousand for a vehicle. The last one was closer one hundred and thirty thousand. So it's really, really increased.
Ridiculous, really.
A lot of fuel and everything. Uh, but I make sure that one of the ridership charts has just the blue route. So you guys could see how it's just being done for Bay County. Um, we have went into all the other cities and municipalities by mentioned and asking for an increase. A lot are reconciling with their budget and seeing what they can fit in. City of Beckley and Raleigh County have doubled their annual assessment, um, but those are the only ones that have gotten back to us so far. We are very grateful for the partnership with you guys and we've been visiting as much as we can to other councils and stuff. And we see a lot of riders that depend on us every day. Um, we've actually got on the buses since we got a new system called Pasio and it's a live map. And so people can see where their buses are, or they can even say they need to go here and it'll map out where they start their route and where they need to transfer to get to back. So that's a really neat, um, we're trying to keep up with technology. So, um, but a lot of familiar faces when we get on those buses, same people.
What kind of funding are you receiving from the other? You know, you have a lot of routes in Beckley, so Raleigh County and the city of Beckley.
Yes, so we have Raleigh County, the city of Beckley, Sophia, um, Oak Hill, Fayetteville, and New York.
Heather, um, you know where I'm going to go. When I was on the board, we were fortunate enough to get a bus to go on weekends between all of the areas around here. And it got nicknamed the party bus. That I still see as a large need specifically for this area because the amount of people we have coming in that can safely take them from place A to place B. Um, and, and it was very popular there at the end. I mean, we really had great ridership. Um, are you guys looking at that again? Or have you contacted any of the resorts or places around that asked them if they would be interested in in helping fund something like that?
We've absolutely had several meetings, but it always usually comes down to funding and the local match to get it there. So for instance, just to keep this going and continue to get our demand response, which is the ones that call ahead, pick up at a certain area, drop off at a certain area. Find just enough drivers to get our current level of service. It's very difficult. But we have sat down with, um, the active individuals and that's when we started with bike racks in front of all of the buses. Um, we sit down lots of multiple times. Um, we sit down with parents.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about that, the train station, the visitor center here for the park.
It's really hard to get any communication going there because it's pretty much a just a stop. So there's not someone that I can communicate with and give them a heads up and talk back and forth. The best thing for that would be a demand response trip because there's not a whole lot of traffic. We'd love to be able to pick up those that do get picked up and taken wherever they need to go. But we really can't validate hiring a full time driver to go back and forth on that route. If we haven't got, since I've been there in seven years, I had two phone calls. So we just don't really have anybody inside to communicate with from the train station and then really don't see the need as much with the train station because no one's calling, asking about it.
Well, they don't know about it. I mean, I think maybe talking to Amtrak or the, because they usually do have somebody manning them down there, at least when the trains are going in and out.
Yeah, we definitely.
Because they're going to expand that Amtrak route to, um, every day from three days a week to in the future. I've seen it in the Washington Post.
Wow. Yeah, if you guys know of any contact that could help me coordinate and to, um, do something to be able to maybe do it in my view, like we do with the prison, the local prisons, we do it in my, in my view, instead of a contract. So that way we can schedule things and to be able to, um, make sure we're being able just for that purpose and to drive her scheduled for that specific trip. So we definitely would love to look into the parks as well, since everything's become official. Um, it's just all comes back to the local match, being able to, there's plenty of federal, but we have to make sure that we have it in our budget to pull down the federal dollars. So, um, unfortunately, that's always the conversation and where it usually stops, um, whenever it comes to individual things like Amtraks and parks and stuff like that. But, um, if we could get enough individuals to or resorts, as you had mentioned, to get on board with it and be able to help fund that the labor of it only because as you both know, public transit's not a money maker. It's
Providing service.
Providing, yes, providing to our community. So, um, guys find connections, know of anybody, send them our way. We'd love to see things work out. It's just getting the right people in the way.
Okay, any other questions, commissioners?
No.
Right, appreciate it.
Um, if you guys ever need anything, just reach out and then have us find them and, um, we'd be happy to do anything we're able to. And then if I can help in any further way, uh, maybe an increase, um, just let me know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Speaking of the increases, they're asking. Fifty two, fifty two tunnel left or something like that.
Lovely.
Yeah. All right, it's a little later, nine fifteen, but, uh, there's a call to levy, call this, uh, special levy. And I want to, uh, I got some recommendations that I'm going to present to the commission today. And I'm going to say a few things in prior to that, uh, my recommendations. First, I want to talk a little about our present levy. Our present levy cycle runs from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. That's a five year cycle. July first through June thirtieth. I believe this levy has been the same since nineteen eighty. I have some, like I said, I have some recommendations, like to print, present to the commission now. Recommendation one, I'm recommending the levy cycle change from five years to four years. The reason I want to change the levy cycle is to keep the cycle in the same path for the levy to be presented one year in advance before the budget year implementation of the funds. The second recommendation, I'm recommending a clause put in the levy order that allows the commission to reduce the excess levy tax rate every physical year if the county has surplus funds. It's called conservative spending. Cutting taxes when possible, prudent to, to do so. Raise them overall only, only when necessary to balance the budget and only in combination with spending cuts. It means when you run a surplus, you save it. You don't squander it. Now I'll go to my third recommendation. I'm making a recommendation to, to reallocate law and fire as equal percentages. The reason for the request for equal percentages is over the last four years, law has had an average yearly deficit of seventeen thousand dollars with six hundred thousand dollars in law levy accounts. While the fire has had a four year average surplus of four hundred thousand dollars per year with four point two million in the fire levy accounts. I want to make one more uh, suggestion that I'm going to ask the fire departments.
What was the number you said before, um, four point two?
A deficit of seventeen thousand. Okay.
The surplus is four hundred?
A year.
Okay.
Four, four hundred thousand a year, uh, fire levy has four hundred thousand a year surpluses every year. Now, the next thing I want to talk about is I'm going to ask Josh to get with the fire departments and all the projection that you made on the debt, the present debt to the fire departments shown in the spreadsheet. I'd like to all to get the information together. I'm going to put the paying the debt off on February sixteenth on the agenda. So if you can get all that, the documentation to give to Ruth, so if the commission decides to pay the debt on the sixteenth, she can follow up and start paying the debt.
Well, I think you could provide it. I, I mean, you could give him just a little more time to get, we can vote to on the issue. And then if we vote to approve it, then he can provide it to her after the meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we know approximately what it is based on what he gave us, right?
I might, I'll, sometimes I try, I try to push.
Not trying to, yeah.
That's not my full time job.
So now.
Well, if anything else, if, if anything else, let the chiefs know if they, I mean, they have, yeah.
Like I said, it's a couple of days of a hard push to get any information from fifteen places.
And for the record of today's meeting, he's the, um, deputy director of the fire association.
So I just, you know, I just want you to know that I'm going to bring it up on the sixteenth. Okay. You want to, uh,
A lot of people's going to have.
What I'm going to slide sheet.
Is part of their bid, you know, the building. I got to get that pulled out. You know, that's.
You'll, you'll have time.
Yeah, 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 that's no problem.
All right. Any questions by the commission?
No, not on this. I got my list.
Does anybody have questions? Huh? Okay.
We come up here to the market times the biggest one hearing stage.
Council on, um, or maybe some people would say. The levy started thirty years ago, eighty one, eighty two. And the purpose of the levy, at that time, there was, um, a little bit of revenue sharing and the fire department saw that the revenue sharing was going in. And that was the only way we'd ever received any, any funding from the county. Uh, at the time, uh, commissioners told me that the revenue sharing wasn't going to end. But, but it did. And, uh, we received a little bit of money. Uh, my first years of chief, I got, uh, twenty five hundred dollars from the town and thirty five hundred dollars from the county. That was our budget. And, uh, so we proposed a levy, started the levy, uh, later on, it was added on to for law enforcement staff. And, uh, at one time we reduced our amount to give the work to the sheriff's department. However, county commissions over the years, uh, originally it was eight deputies on revenue sharing and, uh, eight deputies were on the, uh, levy. And that, that bonded those eight deputies that they'd had to lay off. Over the years, the commission kept taking deputies off the levy, off, off the general fund and adding them to the levy. So in effect, they were making money for themselves instead of giving more money to law enforcement. They were shifting from one pocket to another. Um, and that was over the years. Can't speak to the last few years, probably had to cut about any.
No, you should mention it.
Well, believe it or not, I, I was going to talk about that today or let, wait until we see if the commission votes on it. Or they want to make sure my, what I'm proposing is the right thing or not. But the plan is to eventually start winging the deputies off the levy and try to move them all back to the county general account to make sure they don't have to worry about having a job if the levy doesn't pass. And, and I, that's one of the things we will talk.
Public safety issue if the levy doesn't pass.
That, that's been my concern for years on that.
Ours too. I don't think levies should pay for our annual expenses, like other than volunteer fire department's extraordinary expense. And that's just something you can't budget for, but.
You know what?
For, um, for law enforcement. Um, there are, you know, there are employees and we don't have any other employees who are being paid by another source. I mean, we should be able to pay our employees and, and give them raises. So that's one of the reasons we have cut spending and been saving money to try to, um, give more raises and to do the things that, and, and maintain our buildings and do the things that we should have been doing all along. Um, I don't think we should need an extraordinary tax to to pay our, our staff.
I'm going to tell you, I'm, I'm not afraid to say whatever I want to say. I'm going to tell you the last commission, in my opinion, after looking at everything, I've been here four years. It was the utilized general funds to do stuff on the outside for certain special groups that shouldn't have been done. It's because they was, they was taking that money and putting in special interest is what they did. They pulled the law enforcement off there, put it on the levy in order to have more money to spend where they wanted to spend. That was the issue with the last commission. I mean, that's, and what I've seen, that's what it was.
I'm glad to hear you say that. Um, we're in agreement. Uh, I, I felt that was a bad way to, uh, it wa, it wasn't benefiting law enforcement to be keeping, shifting people over to the, to the levy.
Well, right now, the county minister told me the other day, um, that we're assessing max tax and we're assessing the max levy. And, and so, I mean, that's irresponsible. Like that's something that should be reviewed regularly and not just, you know, padding pockets and stuff. We've managed to, to save money, um, just by not spending on those special interest things over the past three years since I've been here. And now we've built up enough that we're able to start budgeting for things like moving law enforcement off of the levy and that sort of thing. Which is what we've asked her to figure out how many, come up with a plan, how many of the, is it twenty three that we're paying out a levy right now? It's an outrageous number. It's outrageous number. Um, that's, that's two thirds of, of our sheriff's deputies. So, um, to figure out how many we can transition a year off and just start doing it and start planning for it. And that'll be something, you know, if, if, if we do vote for this ability to reduce, um, which I, I, I'll tell you, I like that idea, but, um, the ability to reduce, that's something we would assess. Okay, are we still able to get these deputies off and that sort of stuff?
And that's the reason for the second recommendation is it's not, it's, it's to do that.
But we should, I mean, we're just taxing everybody and it, and it was like everybody was just having field day with the taxes and you know, and we still didn't have a lot in our coffers either because of the choices.
I don't, I don't have the I can't say I understand the process of, of deciding how to, how much you could reduce or anything, but, uh, we're not permitted to suck every cent we can out of that. Just, we want to provide the necessary services. Suck every cent we can out of that. Just we want to provide the necessary services. So that that's my support for the law. The fire levy on this. Paying off the debt is is. I'm sure that a lot of departments would have gone into a lot of debt and thought they're gonna take the money and pay off their debt. There's a lot of departments that. Right or wrong, and since the levy began, fire departments have been allowed to save their money for major capital purchases. And all the past uh commissions allowed those departments to to build up that money. Uh, when I was a fire chief, I didn't want to pay interest on trucks. I saved my money until I could pretty well pay it down. Uh, and that's to me a responsible way uh to proceed. Uh, you wanna and and we always uh. Wouldn't, the association wouldn't approve purchase of the truck if they couldn't pay it off in the levy period. So. The only reason, the main reason we have a surplus is about eight hundred thousand, and I believe. You don't have exact figures, this is all on people's mind. But I'd say there's about eight hundred thousand dollars that the fire departments had saved and were planning on using. Major capital purchases in fact, this last year alone. Without any warning, uh, the commission said, well, your your incurred balance is not really incurred. If you don't spend it this year, uh, you lose it. Now, that's the way the federal government operates.
Because I've said the opposite multiple times in here. There are people within the county who present it. And I said it in the last meeting specifically that we are not in in one of those spend on stuff you don't need. And then, you know, so you can get the same budget next year. Like, that is not how we operate.
That's not what these recommendations.
Based on need, it's not based on, you know, it's what you need. This year and what you need next year are gonna maybe very different in the fire world. I mean.
As it stands, we've been told that we can't, they can't carry out those balances. In fact, this year, there is no uh, there is no line.
But that's what the budget process, where when they come in and they say, we're gonna need a new truck and, you know, next year. Then that's where we put that in, where we have the county minister to put that in and say, okay, you know, Oak Hill's gonna need a new engine or something. And then, and then we'll account for that when we're doing, making decisions up here. But having the fire departments themselves to have, you know, it sitting in a in an account. No, we didn't want that to happen because we want to see, you know, how much everybody needs, so we're not overtaxing people.
Fire departments had money in those accounts for forty years that were told the money's there. In your account, it's it was carried over every year if I had to spend it. And and they used that as savings. Uh, with those major purchases, so they didn't have a place as much. But now that money's not there in their account.
But it's here.
Yeah.
I know, it's it's there. You all can make the decisions instead of the fire department being able to.
If they had the money before, why they need to borrow the money to 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 get the engines? I mean, I.
They did. They they spent what they had, but like right, right now, there's several departments that have money for building additions. And that is not in their account. Now. What happened, and I've seen this with car rentals, the account. When the department, when the department had a manager, they're not able to fund that, but when the commission got to. Decide who gets the money. Uh, a lot of times, politics was involved in it.
The politics was involved in this all before.
Tried to set up. I think where the fire association all agreed. You know, when when things came to you all. It was a fire association, we all, which had a role individual fire departments did not approach the county commission. They're gonna have to deal with sixteen, they had to deal with uh departments who got together, worked things out. And we're in agreements that this is the way we move forward.
We still hope that'll be the case.
Well, I've mentioned it over here, when when uh. Chief Richardson brought that engine replacement, it says up top and I mentioned, I said, well, the association makes that decision, not the commission. I said, so the the association and the departments still get together and present it to the commission.
Come up with a prior.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I said last meeting.
You're you're proposing right now to pay off uh certain departments that went into debt. Uh, you're you're saying you're gonna pay off all their debts?
That the the what Josh got put on his spreadsheet and I'm I'm. I I can't make that decision. I'm gonna bring it before the commission on the sixteenth. Let the commission look at it and the commission will make the decision. I'm just making a recommendation to do it. That way it wipes, it wipes the that debt clean. You start debt clean.
Understand more about what that is before before I make, you know, before I vote on that.
But why, but why not do it if we have the money?
I see there's certain departments that manage their money well and don't have any debt, but they're gonna be.
Let me tell you something else, though. I mean, there have been a couple of changes in the last forty years, as you know, that. Where the state is now starting to give more money to the fire departments. Now, it's not guaranteed, so we've got to keep that in mind. Um, but but when the state is giving money and in these big municipalities like Oak Hill and Fayetteville in particular. Um, those municipalities provide funding to their departments also, as you know. So when there's gonna be a new building, when the statute says. If the county fire levy that's that's funded by the entire county, every citizen, county's paying taxes pays into that. Is going to purchase a building for a municipality. It will then belong to the municipality. For it to leverage and buy, you know, bank buildings or whatever it wants to do with them. So um, so that's another consideration when, you know, somebody comes in and they especially want in a municipality, wants to build a new building. You know, municipality probably needs to come in and say what skin they have in the game, you know. Um, we have to look at what the state's contributing, if there are any grants contributing. Before we say, okay, yeah, all of the taxpayers of Fayette County is gonna build this building for Oak Hill. Now, it's Oak Hill's not the best example for this because I just did it because they are, want to build a new building, but. But I'm using it because Oak Hill does respond to calls, I know, oh, and I've said that last meeting, all over the, you know, place. And so, you know, I don't want the citizens of Fayette County to think Oak Hill isn't serving them because they aren't. Um, but but that's just an example of where something that we need to consider at this level. Rather than um leave that up to the municipalities that's been done in the past because you, they can't be objective. Of course, they're gonna want their fire departments to have new buildings. You know, and so those are the things that we need to be able to consider at this level.
Any other, and I wa- I wasn't gonna talk about this today, but since we're talking about this, the legislature does have a one percent. A a bill out for a one percent amusement tax that that there has come before the. Uh, house and the senate. And if it passes, if the commission's, the commission decides to implement that one percent amusement tax, it's for safety. One of the things it can be used for is the safety. And that's another added revenue stream that could help with the offset the levy. I was gonna say more about it, but that's, you know, I just want you to know that there's a lot of things working that this commission is working on, that has been working on. Well, since I got here, that is moving things in a in a different way. Conservative spending, but making sure that everything is adequately taken, adequately taken care of. So I mean, uh, if the one percent passes. There there there's a money that could be added to deputies in fire, the law in fire.
So when you say you're proposing uh equal shares for law enforcement. And for fire service. That's based upon budgets.
Well, I just mentioned it, there's, there's, there was a act, a deficit in the last four years. With the law levy of seventeen thousand dollars a year average. There was an average of four hundred thousand surplus from the fire levy funds. So that's where I come up with that, to equalize everything.
One thing, one thing you might not know, and that I'm sure will concern you too, given your support for law enforcement, is that. We've had the, we have not been able to replace as many cruisers as we would like. They are driving old cruisers that are, you know, we're patching them together. They've got hundreds of thousands of miles on them and they're driving on the roads every day in these cruisers. And you know how important it is to you guys to have your safety equipment intact. Well, that's their daily, that's their office. So, so, you know, where law enforcement runs short in the commission. You know, we don't, we still don't have, I mean, we've been able to build up some money and we're trying to be able to pay our bills, maintain our buildings and that sort of thing. You know, buying cruisers at the rate we really need to or when they become available because they're so rare. So sometimes, like, we recently had to buy three and because they were available. I mean, it's just hard to get them. So we want to be able to, um, I mean, I'm I'm gonna recommend that we be able to buy cruisers out of the levy. That we change it from salaries and benefits.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that.
Just salaries and benefits to be able to buy equipment, so they don't have to rely on the commission having a good tax year. To get their cruisers updated, because right now, I don't know, Ruth, how many behind are we? Probably at least six. We probably need to. I mean, John, you've studied the list. Yeah, I mean, yeah, there, I mean, I'm guessing at least six because it was about two-thirds of them. Like, that's how bad it's been. And we're we're just nickel and diming it and getting to here and getting to there. And there's still deputies out there and what I, what are suboptimal vehicles in my view. Um, so, you know, that's, that's something that I would expect, you know, if if the levy were to pass. If we were to amend it and it were to pass in that way, that that would be funded out of that, rather than the salaries. At some point, we can get those salaries off of there. Just make sure they have the equipment they need. They had to wait two or three years for low-bearing vests to um. That are easier on their backs to carry their equipment on and things like that. So, um, you know, I don't think, just like I don't think fire should have to wait for its. Equipment and upgrades and stuff. I don't think law enforcement should either. And and um, you know, if we can pay for it out of our budget, we tend to try, but. Um, and right now, all of that is reliant on the county's revenue, which is, you know, up and down depending on the year. So, that's something that I think that, so in addition to that seventeen thousand that he mentioned. We have the tens of thousands that we've been spending on vehicles in that, on the ones that we weren't able to buy. You know, they're about sixty thousand dollars apiece. So on the ones that we haven't been able to buy, if we had more money in the account, it would have paid for those and they wouldn't be driving what they're driving. That's something that really worries me, you know.
Well, I want the commission to understand. On the fire levy, when you talk about us having money in the bank. Like I said, five of us had saved about eight hundred thousand of that. So if you take out the departments that are saving money and give it to departments that have maybe overextended. That's one thing. The other is. For forty years, we have built back enough money to operate on one year if the levy failed. That's, you know, over a million dollars. What about one point five is what we've said. We're looking at uh. County commission is very familiar with the fact that we've tried to to build a building that's training center, we can operate out of it. Right now, and I'll give them credit, they've been, they've been operating in. Thirty-degree weather, doing training classes with no shelter. Other than the carport. We've about got our engineering plans finished on that building. And and we've got engineers to take us through the bid process to make sure that everything is absolutely right. And this is on cost about. Looks like give or take, we're making some final. Operations that may uh lower or increase the budget. But we're looking at approximately one point nine million to have that building with a classroom space. Uh, and we're gonna make it structurally so if you've got a bay area, then you've got a classroom there. And structurally, uh, we've looked at increasing that, so you you've got extra height on the. Classroom side. So obviously, in your bay area, it's all solid, like standing a couple of feet. Not put again to make it structurally ready for a second door on that side. But to to. Do everything we need to do, like everybody's water and and hopefully, we're having uh this week do the big plans to the fire marshal's office. See what that's, if there are any uh operations we'd have to do for that. So we're looking at about two million there. So the money, uh, uh, we're not looking at debt. We've got an excess of funds, we've got. We've been trying to spend a lot of that money for a good while. We've got uh, the two things we were looking at this year is. Thermal energy cameras, the ones we got. I bought about twenty, twenty-five years ago, which they were the best on the market. The uh. Another company, they were so good, another company bought them out and discontinued them so they could sell theirs. Our gas air, our gas monitors, when we go on any incident for those hazardous materials. Uh, our four gas monitors, uh, same situation, another company bought them out. We can't get them repaired. Uh, those are critical to us. When you're going into a hazard, that's, I don't, you don't know if you're going into a hazard.
I've been through hazmat, you know, from the military, so.
Saying we've got excess funds i- is not an accurate representation when we've been trying to to manage that money. And 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 use it efficiently, but there are needs we've been trying to do. That was, we're planning on this uh, in April, going to the FDIC to look at those two things specifically.
Well, the training center board should probably get on the agenda to present its plans. Because we hear about what's going on out there anecdotally in meetings in here.
We don't want to bring anything to you until we're ready. Uh, any weird plans and approval from the fire marshal's office.
Agreed.
You know, we're gonna do that, we're gonna do that too much.
Agreed.
Well, and again, you know, just because other thing, you know. We have been trying to do things right under state code and advertising bids and stuff. And I know that's been frustrating to those of you who are used to, you know, the departments that were used to doing it a different way, you know, but. But that's the law and and just because it wasn't followed in the past doesn't make it right. We have to make sure that's done properly because again, it's taxpayer money. Taxpayers need to have the opportunity to bid on these jobs. You know, and that that's just.
That's why we're going back.
Right.
The last time Tom said he was gonna make sure we had it right.
Well, I mean, I told you even before, don't bring it in here unless the fire marshal signs off on it. I mean, I don't mean that.
You should have estimates uh on what the levy will bring in. If you're setting the tap, you're setting the rate and you're gonna deviate that rate. Uh, is is, when you say equal shares, you're you're cutting the fire levy.
Well, it's the rate, we're changing the rate.
And that, that's what brings in the money.
Yeah.
Did you have someone run the numbers on those?
I've had to run the numbers, but it's an estimate. If you want to. If you don't want to vote on this today and you want to put it off and we bring back.
I don't want to, I don't want to vote on it today. That's the reason I'm asking because I'm just hearing this.
It's an estimate no matter what.
You've got limited amount of time to set the level.
To the twentieth. Has to be done before February twentieth.
But say you're going to set a levy rate and you don't know how much money it's going to do.
Well, you won't know how much money is going to.
Never.
Until March first, it's always estimate. And even that estimate's not accurate.
Thank you, Ruth.
Well, I mean, there's uncollectibles, there's.
Well, in a budget every year, you've got the, the estimate, what you're going to bring in.
It's an estimate.
Uh, how much you're up and flat, how much you're going to play previous years. I've, I've been through that for forty years.
Yeah.
I've been involved in the.
Well, I want to make my, what I, what main thing I want to do today is make this presentation. So if there's any questions, anybody can question it between now, I, I believe the commission, I won't go ask the commission to, I, I was going to ask to vote on it. But I mean, if they don't feel comfortable with it and the numbers may not be right, if they want to look at it, we have to the twentieth. We can put it back on the sixteenth if that's what the commission wants to do.
I mean, right now.
I had to do this today.
And, and no real idea how this is going to affect.
Well, we'll, we'll make sure, we make, we'll make sure. So I think I, we'll postpone it's what we want to do.
Yeah, Raleigh County set their fire levy rates and it's comparable to what we have now. Now, obviously Raleigh County brings in a ton of money off that.
Twenty-five millions is what their, the revenue stream is.
Their smallest department gets more money off the fire levy than our largest.
I think there's less of them in the county.
A lot of full-time.
We're thinking, we're thinking we won't be with a, a, a four-year levy, we're looking at. Uh, probably only they will replace two trucks because they're, the, the price has gone. You talk about the price of the cruiser, uh, uh, a pair of those puffers will be three quarters of a million.
Well, I caused, I called, uh, Josh last week just to clarify at least my, my position on, um, some of the things we discussed. Last week that if the fire association decides that it needs or departments need to hire accounting services or the departments need to. Um, hire somebody to coordinate these, this testing and stuff, uh, that the fire coordinator used to do for the county. Um, that there's no problem with that, them doing that. I just don't feel like the county needs to employ the fire coordinator and give benefit, pay benefits and all that stuff. That, that if, if the function is needed, it's one that should be supervised by the fire association that has the expertise that should be. Chosen by the fire association that has expertise. Like, uh, you, how many times have we advertised? We just don't have the qualifications to, to do that, you know, and, and so. It's not a matter of giving you more work to do. It's a matter of giving you more power over who is serving you and then you can. You know, come in, I mean, I would support, um.
I don't think you've heard anybody complain.
Hiring that well. No, I have not heard that from the fire association at all. And in fact, Josh was very gracious when I spoke to him. But, but just to be clear, like, we're not trying to say you're on your own. It's more like, tell us what you need rather than us, you know, being in the weeds on it. I mean, we just. You know, it, that just wasn't, that system in, in my view was not working. We had, you know, several people employed here who were doing those jobs and, and our accountant was still doing the bulk of the. You know, sorting out, you know, our, our deputy county minister, we're still sorting out everything in the end. Really, we are the money people. You know, we don't, that's how we help the sheriff, you know? He comes in, tells us when he needs money and we say, okay. And that's what we're asking of you guys. We don't supervise these deputies or supervise the tax office. You know, that's not our, our job. That's, that's all, you know, we were trying to do with that. And as far as some of these other expenses, the budget process should, should accommodate that. I mean, you guys know what you need. You've been for forty years, you've been tracking who needs what and when. I mean, it's just a matter of letting us know so we can, and, and when you come as a group, like you said. That, that should streamline things, I think. I mean, the, the only thing is, is that, yeah, you're right. It's going to sting a little bit probably for, for the departments who've been managing well versus the ones who haven't. But then you've got these small departments that are operating, you know, on shoestring because.
Probably, uh. And, and I saw this when I came back, uh, when I left. There, there was no insurance money. And so, uh, what the department's got was based upon you had a certain amount of money. That every department needed to operate on, around, maybe even two trucks, a million insurance or. Yeah, and obviously operating expenses bear. But, uh, at that time, that's all we had with a four dealer was, that was the source of funding other than, uh. Really three most now, I mean, one, two, three. As far as. When, uh. When the insurance money came in, that was allocated equally across the courts. Uh, to me, that takes care of that basic needs. And then when you look at fire levy, it's, uh, allowed to be used strictly looking at what the departments, uh. Need per se. And, and the state gives us ability to save that money. And I'm told the departments, you need to spend your living money. Uh, and save your insurance money because the state allows you, you can get that money in that account for ten years or twenty years. And they really don't, they allow you to manage that budget.
But the insure, well, I guess the problem I have with that is that the insurance money is from regular tax dollars and the levy money is from an excess tax. So, um.
You're saying that, that changes why you look at it, the how it taxes.
Well, I mean, it, it should have been because it's, it, it's excess tax, it's extra task, tax, we're taxing, taxing people. And there's already some funds there. That, that's, you know, and I'm not trying to be hard, but I mean, that's, that's a problem, that's a problem with that. I mean, providing a service and getting what's needed, I don't have a problem. I just have a problem if it's, if there's more than is needed, continue taxing the people. And that's why I wanted that second clause put in there. I don't think it's right. I mean, I've said it since I got here in twenty nineteen.
I, I just don't know. What you're proposing there as far as who decides what's needed.
Well, I mean, you present a budget, present a budget, but each, you know, I mean.
That was your sugar thing that just went.
Well, I, I'll tell you, I'll just, you know, I don't know if this would provide any comfort, um, but we don't tend to reduce budgets. Okay, so whatever you've been spending is going to be a great baseline. Because you know, when, when the assessor comes in, we're not, we don't say, you have to cut an employee. You know, he'll come in and say, I need to pay like you did last week. I need to pay my employees more because I can't even get anybody to apply for a job here. You know, we typically increase budgets. That's usually the whole budget presentation process is about. Asking for more money than you had before, whether it's for an extraordinary expense or whether it's for, um, salaries and, and raises and stuff like that. So. Um, you know, I really think, I know there's a lot of fear and uncertainty within the fire service right now, but I don't expect. Once things settle down, that they're going to see any change in their ability to operate and the quality of their equipment or anything like that. I mean, we, I don't think any of us want, you know, to take from their ability to operate and have the best we can provide. You know, they're just, that's just not the case. So they, you, you know, they have forty years worth of levy, um. Expenses that we can document, they're not going to get less than that. You know what I mean? I mean.
So, uh.
I mean, now we might not build everybody brand new.
Equal shares rules, you're reducing the amount.
It has to reduce it, that's a question. It has, it ha, it has to reduce it. It has to. If the, if you had a, if, yeah, if you had a, if you had a higher rate than the dep, than law did, if fire had a higher rate than law. It will, yeah, they did. It will reduce the, the, but it, then again, our assessed values could be up twenty percent.
Well, traditionally they're up a lot.
Okay, so, so, uh, it could be, it could be the same amount.
You're not talking about.
Well, and we have state money this year. So, you know, there, there are some other, you know, things, considerations, but, I mean. I haven't had enough time to really think about it, but, you know, having a shorter levy cycle, while it might be a little scarier, um. Would allow us to adjust it up or, you know.
If you don't have a shorter levy cycle, when you look on the levy next time, the budget's already went.
Yeah.
So you're not going to be scrambling to figure out where you put, what to do with all that.
Yeah, it has.
That's why it has to be four years.
It has to be four years.
I'll say, I don't know anybody.
Oh, so that's not, that's something we need to do.
Because if you don't do, if you don't go to four years, you're either going to do it rightly by the end of the levy or you're going to do it two years ahead of them. So I haven't heard anybody express any problem, but, uh. I'm going to say something because nobody else has.
Well.
Equal shares for law and fire means you're planning on not putting the libraries on levy.
Oh, no, they're on there. They'll be on there.
What's our levy?
Well, equal between what y'all two had. What I did is I took what, I, I took what, I took what, no, no, no. I took what, I took what law had and I took what fire had and divided them equally. Library stayed the same. Yeah, I should explain that, but yeah, that's, when I said equally, I didn't, I didn't, but I didn't say I left the library out. I didn't say I let the library out. Yeah, and I apologize, just explained that. That's a good question.
Okay, I have a statement that, um, talking about the increase, the levy has increased in value. From the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen year to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, thirteen to seventeen percent. And then you had mentioned the thermal imaging units and the other monitors. What's the cost on those?
Josh, you've been looking at that, uh. If we buy one.
Individually, they're fifty-two hundred dollars. If we can find as a group, it knocks it down to thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Each?
We could save a couple thousand dollars and that's the beauty of.
And that's by the thirty-two.
Fire department's worked again. You save, uh, uh, about two thousand dollars a year.
So that's fifteen houses.
Fifteen houses, two.
Two camps.
Two camps. One on each.
So thirty, so give me a number. You got your calculator there.
Hundred.
Six change cars, thirty-two camps.
One point, hundred and eight, hundred and eight, if it's thirty, thirty, thirty-six hundred, hundred and eight, I believe. I just, I think it's what it is.
There's, there's great changes from what you're about things to go.
And that includes the other device too?
I know.
No, that's just.
That's why I was going to, I mean. Okay, well, I'll say something, but I'm afraid if I say anything, everybody will say.
Gas modern range and there's a bunch of, we haven't talked at the association which ones, I mean, there's a, there's, there's a bunch of different ones of those. I mean, they range anywhere from eight hundred to fifteen hundred apiece.
Yeah.
That depends on what gases you want them to read. And I mean, there's.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Krickshane, I, I, I don't want, I'm not pushing you away. We're way behind, believe me. If I, if I, the only reason I haven't said nothing, I believe everybody's starting to, to tell me I need to say something. Only reason I hadn't said it because I'm going to get browbeat because like I'm trying to push you away from asking you questions, but I don't. So I'm going to let the other commissioners make the decision if we need to move one or listen. I mean, I'm not, I, I don't. Anything I say here is used against me. So, so, so especially with the fire, so. If y'all two commissioners got any suggestions or more questions, I don't care.
Ruth mentioned to me that we could, that we could vote. Today about whether to put the levy on the primary and then we could, and I, I'm not prepared to make a decision today about the, the levy amounts. So, I mean, so I always put him off. Um, so I'd like to do at least that on Friday.
So you just want to put the, say we're putting the levy on the ballot, but then do everything else Friday?
Yeah, set the, set the rates.
Okay.
On Friday. So I, I move that we, um, put the levy on the primary ballot.
Second.
Own favor?
Bye.
Meaning. I don't care if you stand up for forever.
You said you had a question. I didn't know.
Oh, that was the, the price on those. So I figure about two hundred and fifty thousand will get you the thermal imaging and the gas meter. Two of them for each.
That we had, you know, we had calculators back then.
Uh.
That's always my suggestion.
Okay, alright.
The beauty of that is, is you get to see every single inventor in, in the silent guy.
That's.
Okay.
Those two hundred and eleven.
Well, I was just doing a swag, so.
Get you the ballpark.
Yeah.
For decisions, so.
Okay.
It's not an open concern, it's not.
So did you like finish your vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, we finished the both.
To put it on the ballot.
I, I also make a motion to move the setting of the rates until this coming Friday, which is the sixteenth.
Seven.
Own favor?
Thank you.
That all?
Okay.
Alright, I mean, I, I wasn't, hey, I wasn't going to ask you to leave that podium or whatever you want to call that, believe me. I would have heard it.
Absolutely.
Well.
None of this other stuff is publicly known, so.
But isn't, i- isn't somebody coming in from FEMA for that ten o'clock?
The guy said he couldn't come and they're begging.
Leslie may be on.
Leslie's on.
She's on.
I, well, we. Because the budget presentation is a, is an internal thing and we may have external people for ten o'clock. I think we ought to get ten o'clock done first.
Are they only?
Leslie Taylor's on there. Who else could it be?
EMA, that, oh, no, that's Kevin. Um, Kevin, do you see any names of anybody from, um, the state on there? You unmute him. Okay. He's not unmuted.
John Gavin. Yeah, John Gavin, is there a John Gavin?
With short notice, I don't know if he could have made it or not.
I mean, I mean. Leslie, I mean, if Leslie's on there, she can, she can hang on or get back with us if we want.
Maybe we can get some information from her, but really we need to know what's going on from them.
Yeah, and Leslie's been on all of the conference calls concerning that.
Okay. Will you unmute Leslie?
No, we need to get going, doing something. Is she unmuted?
Yep.
Leslie?
Good, good morning.
Good morning. You want to give us a scoop?
Um. So we did have a call with emergency, West Virginia Emergency Management, specifically, um, Dr. Jason Means, uh, last week. And I think that Jason, um, while he was unable to attend today because the state has a newly declared, uh, declaration. So there's a lot that goes on in their office with that. Um, I do think that it would be beneficial to have Jason attend a meeting because he can give you all the nuts and bolts. Um, as to where I can only give a brief overview. Um, I know that FEMA is currently reviewing all the documents for Canal Falls PSD. Um. They're reviewing codes and standards, the level of authority that, uh, DEP has. Um, and they also have to verify all the damages. So with the amount of damages that happened there in Cannleton Hollow, it does take quite a long time, unfortunately.
It just, like the thing that concerned me, and I know we kind of were grumbling about it among us, but. Um, is all the press that Canal County had, of course, they had a second flood unfortunately in August of this past year. And there's a lot of press saying that they're already going to get their sewer fixed and stuff. And here we have this major issue of Canton Hollow from the year before. And I'm sure Canal County probably still has some of those as well. Um, but I'm just wondering, like, if there's any way that we can expedite this. I mean, they, they are still dealing with raw sewage in the creek. And that, and I don't know why that isn't motivating people to, to try to do something more than we're doing.
Well, I can tell you that, uh, Canal County's disaster from, I believe it was last year, was just declared. And there is no money flowing anywhere yet. It's a lengthy process. So, um, once FEMA gets involved. The dollars don't start flowing immediately. They all go through a, a very lengthy review. the dollars don't start flowing immediately. They all go through a, a very lengthy review because there has to be documentation of the damages. FEMA just doesn't come in. So there, there are no dollars flowing in Canal County at this point. They did just have uh a declaration. And I think, I see Kevin on there. Kevin may be able to speak to that as well. I know he's been through it also.
I'd like Kevin to chime in. Kevin, if you could tell um the other two commissioners what you told me the other day about, I mean, we, this is what I wanted to talk to Dr. Means about because we're getting nickel and dime to death. I mean, we are very meticulous in our documentation of everything, knowing about this because we had the two thousand sixteen floods. And um, and now, you know, we're getting micromanaged even worse than that. I mean, it's, go ahead and tell them, Kevin.
Good morning, Commissioner. I guess um we are getting micromanaged like crazy right now through FEMA. Um, I actually had a phone call with Leslie last week and we discussed this as well. Uh, because Ms. Taylor, she's been working with me on these projects as well, and we have kinda hit a stopping point to where we have provided all the documentation that we have, everything that I have, have all the way down to emails and documentation from Southern Soul Conservation on the string debris removal and everything on the reason being the three, seven, three, one, the seven, one, three U agreement. Um, all the commission meeting minute notes, commission insurance policies. You think of it, we've provided it to them, and it seems not to be enough for them, and we're to the point now that I don't know what else to do. I've appealed it. We're in the appealing process now trying to make it right again. Um, I've even provided them with CAD sheets for our computer aided dispatch to show that our rescue efforts were in that area that we had rescuers out in the water rescuing individuals. Uh, that it was a countywide effort, and we're still being micromanaged and cannot get no, no leverage. Um, so we're to the point now that we have went above our project manager's head and went directly to uh the FIT representative, which is Mr. Young. He is the supervisor for that district area. And we're hoping that we can get something moving there. So uh not only Canton Hollow, but the whole project right now has stalled out. We've only been given one payment uh for the monies that we have spent out, and we're still holding on other monies to get reimbursed for.
And it, Leslie, the PSD, Canal, Canal Falls PSD, that stuff is being handled by it, right? Not by us?
That is being uh handled by the PSD.
Okay. Well, you guys know that Bill Hines is a FEMA expert. And I, I mean, he might not be, he might be willing to answer a couple of questions for us. I mean, just to see if there's anything we can do. I, I mean, and that's really, that's probably what we need to get Doc Means involved in is what else can we do? You know, what else can we provide that might satisfy them? Because I know that we were very careful to make sure everybody documented everything and did everything according to their process, so what more they could possibly want, we might even have to get our council involved.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, one of the biggest, one of the, one of the things that struck me kinda odd, Commissioner, was when I received the email back from our case manager, he specifically referenced in their search and rescue that we did mention that there were search and rescue, but there's no time sheets. Well, number one, our volunteer fire departments don't keep time sheets, just like a circular job. They're volunteers. They respond to the call. It's on the CAD sheet, the, the engines, the units that go out. And then they keep reports at the station for their person, their, their process of the reports for the state, but we don't keep individual time sheets. But then they also stated that if a rescue does not involve a person or an animal, then it is not considered a rescue, which is false simply because search and rescue does not always produce a project or product.
Is it a, a false? Yeah, I mean, you, are you saying technically false or false according to FEMA rules? Cause that's, it sounds like a FEMA bureaucracy issue.
That's bureaucracy red tape's what it is.
Yeah, so if that's the rule, that's the rule, but.
And that's what it is.
But there were rescues, cause I know the Fire Chief Smithers was rescued from his house.
Correct, yes ma'am, and we have that documented.
So, um, Kevin, could you give Ruth all of the documentation you have and bring it and maybe set up a meeting? Maybe Ruth can meet with um you and Michael Taylor. I mean, that's.
Say, even if they have legal counsel, if, does, do, do you know if they have legal counsel?
FEMA.
That, that's already, yeah, FEMA, excuse me, that, that FEMA has a list on, on any of the information that has legal counsel?
Well, they, they definitely have legal.
They have, they do have legal counsel, but I don't know.
Do you know who that, do you know who it is?
I do not, sir. Not that Ms. Taylor knows either.
Well, I would do.
I don't.
Who legal counsel in my, I mean, and get them, our, our attorney, straight in with their attorney and start cashing this out right now.
I think he could start with them and call whoever, Kevin, the case manager, and just say what more can we provide or their other options? And then, I mean, normally we start there, and then if they, if, if they wanna refer us to their counsel because it's getting to the point where, you know, we might have to find something to get them to do their jobs, then.
I'm at the point that I would just go counsel to counsel. I mean, that's just, I mean, to me, we're wasting more.
Yeah, I can tell you never worked for the federal government, but I'm gonna tell you right now that that's not gonna be efficient. You wanna get with the people. I was a fed for eighteen years.
Alright.
You wanna get with the people on the ground who can do the work and try to get their buy-in and say, look, we're trying to be helpful. What can we do? And then if, you know, and then if we have to actually file legal action, that's when we would ask.
Well, I mean, I figured just to hatch stuff out, see what, what the problem was.
They're not gonna know, cause they handle all the legal problems for the entire organization. They may even have DHS's lawyers rather than FEMA lawyer. Who knows?
Alright.
Anyway.
Well, you're a lawyer, so.
I'll tell you, I'm gonna tell you that normally that would be logical, but the government doesn't work on logic. It works on bureaucracy.
Okay.
How hard can we make it for the civilians paying?
I'll bet that's a question. Was Scrabble Creek involved with that too, the lay of all those?
Yes.
Their break.
Yes.
We have to look.
Yes, I know, but the reason we mentioned Cannleton is because Cannleton, we're still trying to get the reimbursements for everybody and all that, but but can, the thing that's making count and more of an emergency, I guess, is the raw sewage, you know, up there. You've been up there. So, um but no, we haven't forgotten about Scrabble Creek or, or the other places involved.
Cause I had raw sewage from Scrabble Creek also.
Yeah, they, FEMA did not approve any funding for individuals losses. It didn't hit their financial threshold. They only approved funding for government expenses.
Public, including.
Public assistance. Public assistance, all the sewer damage and that sort of thing does fall under there, but but all the people who lost all that, um and I did talk to Kevin about the HVAC units and stuff, and he's coming up with criteria, so I'll have something for you soon on that. Um.
You should have that in your email.
Huh?
Getting water testing. I, I, nobody.
And we probably need to do that.
Any water testing.
We need to do that. Can we do that?
We can pay for it. I mean, we can, we can ask the health department to do it.
D P, we're getting large.
We have the proceeds from that lawsuit.
Okay, I'm gonna, cause our health department can do water testing. They did, well, they did for um the chemical spill, the paint creek. So I think we need to put a letter to the health department on the Friday agenda.
Yeah.
And ask them to do water testing.
Yeah.
Those areas. And I mean, heck, you know, the Canal River is a recreational river and raw sewage is still.
Yeah.
Flowing into there.
Yeah.
Through the creek.
Yeah.
So, um, so thanks, Alan.
Yeah, very, yeah, glad you mentioned it, yeah.
Yeah, and Kevin did send me. I wanna look at it, but he did send us some proposed criteria for um the forty thousand dollars that we set aside.
Okay.
Um, for the individual flood victims. So maybe we can put that back on the agenda for the sixteenth and get that moving. I talked to somebody on the United Way Board about it last week. So.
Alright, is that it?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Leslie and Kevin.
Uh, Commissioner Taylor, would you like for me to reach out to Dr. Means again and see if he's available on Friday?
That, yeah. I mean, if he is, that would be great, cause then we can.
Yeah.
At least hear from him what his recommendations are.
Okay, I will reach out to him today and hopefully get in touch with you uh later this afternoon or by tomorrow, so you'll know whether or not to put him on the agenda.
Okay, and will you please send his number to Ruth? Because I, I'd like um our council to be able to reach out to him to individually, just in case he needs to with these discussions. It does, okay. So we, we have to have it like.
Well, we can put it on there.
By noon tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can pull it on there and maybe, yeah.
Won't be the end of the world.
Not a movement if this, yeah, then just hatch it out or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
No problem. Have a great day.
Camp sore. You might come up.
Come on up to the microphone, please.
Sorry, it's taken so long. Thank you so much.
Hey, Katie.
Hey.
You weren't here to hear me um pitch the New River Transit Authority for one of their old buses. I asked her to put us on the list when they go to auction them off and stuff because told her we needed a couple over here.
Awesome. When does that happen?
When they let us know.
Yeah, when they let us know. It sounds like it's an annual process, but they have a contractor who, and I, I wrote myself a note that I wanna do a letter to the Board of Education asking the same question, like when they decommission something that maybe we can.
Great. Awesome. Um, yeah, we're asking for fifty thousand for our second year council. It's like we agreed on. Um, we go for the Greater Kanawale Foundation on Wednesday, just to ask for forty thousand. And we're raising sponsorship and fundraising for the rest of it. Um, you had mentioned that the scholarship and, and we've, we've talked about this before. We feel like when families are able to put a little bit of money in, we've seen that our attendance is much better if they even have the, the ninety percent scholarship.
It's for their pay. So let's make the fee, but rather than do what we did before, because I, you know, I did, and this happens, you know, when somebody like me goes out in public and hears stuff, but I did the relow program at Valley and and the kids were saying my parents couldn't afford it and all this stuff, and I'm like, so I think what they're doing is they're seeing the seventy-five bucks and they're putting it down. So if we put whatever that nominal fee is, ten bucks, five bucks, and let the commission offset the rest, we can accommodate your concern and we can accommodate our concern with making sure any kid who wants to go, he can. Um, so if you wanna come up with an amount, you know, that you guys think is best, you don't have to tell us today. You could come back, but, but I think we're pretty committed to paying the participation fees. It would just be less than we were, when, planned to pay. Um, but we just, it just seemed like, I think that's what happened, his parents saw, and then they didn't read all the scholarship language or whatever on the form, and so these kids were like, yeah, the ones that went loved it, of course, and, and I, I will say, I've gotten a lot of feedback that it was great. Excited that it's gonna continue.
I think it'll grow from here.
Mm-hmm, and we're committed to, to making sure it continues. I mean, it's just, we needed something like that. And I mean, my, in my view, if we could get something, you know, if we can bust the kids up from other locations in the county for now and eventually maybe expand programming into those areas.
I think we will, the school is willing to work with us and, you know, we had good participation from the valley. Well, we have more resources in the Meadow Bridge area now, so I think we can see more kids.
Good. I, I hope so, and then maybe eventually we can get something at their community centers or something, so they don't have to go so far from home.
We are seeing, you know, right, right now, one of the schools is a main pickup point, so that's a barrier. There's some kids, for some of the bus drivers, they go door to door for some special situations. So um that's something that we could work on.
Okay, so.
Is even like making a run up Cannleton Hollow.
Yeah, I think that would help make it even more accessible. And it's like in addition to scholarships, because we are, you know, whenever it's, we don't even ask for them to provide any information to show that they need the scholarship to kinda remove that barrier if they might, you know, not want, might be too embarrassed to show their income or something like that. But I think to make it more accessible would be providing transportation that picks the kids up from their house. Cause some parents told me that they weren't able to even get their kid to that drop off point where the bus was.
And we might even be able to get, I don't know, because we just had that presentation, but we might even be able to get New River to make this, cause they said.
And even if it's a fleet, even if it's a fee, maybe they can bring us a fee.
The fee.
And there's not, you know, a fee to do it for the time period.
But hopefully the board will work with us on this, cause they already have those routes.
Yeah.
Lined out, but, but, and if we, if that's a budgeting issue, then maybe we can contribute to that process, but if you guys come back to us with, if you can do the legwork on that and find out if the Board of Education will do it, and if so, if they need money, how much? And then with regard to the scholarships, just maybe come up with a lesser amount to participate and then um and then let us know what that's gonna be.
And even New River Transportation, if they, if they can.
We can do that. I think the Board of Education is probably the best place to start, because if it's a matter of, because they do their school bus route.
I'll ask Heather. And New River Transit.
Just to. Ask who?
Heather, the lady was in here.
New River Transit.
I'm on that board.
Obviously, that's my second choice.
They don't go in the valley?
No.
But I mean, if we ask them. But I'm, I'm.
No, it's, there's a different, there's a different.
Canal River Transit is, is what runs over there, but it doesn't come up here. There's nothing between the valley and here except.
But would they if we, if we consider, if we consider, if we can find it.
Saying if we consider for, for the time period. So I mean, I'll, I'll get in touch with them.
I'll say my first choice is for that, if they can.
Yeah.
It's like this year, it's not gonna, and the, they have some money for us this year. They said next year we wouldn't have to find, find money for it.
Okay, maybe if you can find out how much, then we can budget for it. Okay.
That would be helpful rather than find out. Yeah, and like we didn't clarify the door to door, but we'll get back with you.
Okay. Yeah, but I mean, I, I'm fine with the, them having a little skin in the game as far as paying something nominal, but, but keep in mind, a lot of these parents aren't literate. Okay, so you know, they see a number and they're like, uh-uh, you know, I can't afford it. And, or not engaged, or you know, you just don't know what you're dealing with down there. You know, they might not read what's in their child's backpack.
And just, and just throw it to the side, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I mean, and, and maybe, you know, maybe the board would help us, you know, engage those parents a little more to try to get you know, identify kids.
The counselors are helping us identify those kids. Help, we've actually had a counselor, we had Judge Sister go to a person's house, it was an Oak Hill, to help because he couldn't fill out the form. Fill out form.
That's awesome.
Make sure that, to explain to the presentation about the board.
Okay, well, the communities of Montgomery and Meadow Bridge, those areas do not have a community center right now. So those are really underserved communities right now as far as our ability to do things for children. You know, um, up here, we have Militar Trail Community Center and we have the palates here where there's stuff to do. But um those are my greatest concerns is being able to get kids from those areas because Montgomery Pool is closed now. You know, and I don't know, you know, I know they don't have a community center at Meadow Bridge, cause we discussed it last week.
Yeah.
Um, trying to get one there. Anyway, but whatever we can do to help, I know we wanna um support the program and expand it.
Yeah, I think we can expand.
Best thing we have going for kids.
You can really, really grow it. Also more kids right now, we're sticking with the nine, the nine through twelve. We've had requests from the other teenage program.
Okay, I'll move, we approve the fifty thousand they're requesting.
Well, I think it's.
Or do we wait until we do the whole?
Wait, yeah.
Wait till all the.
It's just the presentation.
Okay.
It's okay.
Well, I'm gonna move for when it comes, but um, but the other thing is, if you could get us back that information, when do you need it, Ruth? Like about to put in, like approximately what maybe the tuition would cost and then minus whatever nominal fee you think people should pay.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, plus when you narrow down the start time. Let us know, she had June to July with question marks.
Say that again?
The exact start time.
I could hear you. Okay, yeah, we, we have the. We're saying June.
It's June third through August second.
Okay.
We will take uh the week of July.
And then we're also looking into what to do about um like Jeteenth, the twentieth and the twenty-first, because the board will not be able to provide transportation for those.
What days are they again?
June nineteenth, twenty.
Take holiday.
Twenty-first, yeah, so we're considering how to adapt that week.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Why can't the board do that? I mean, I'm just curious. Why can't the board do that, I mean, I'm just curious, because the board can.
It's a state holiday, they can't.
You sure they can, there are ballgames on state holidays and stuff like that. Maybe I will.
How many counselors do we have?
You got my texts, just remind me, and I'll, I'll call him.
Total counselors, do you have?
We have, um, six junior counselors each week, and then we'll have three, four, we're hoping to have, uh, six adult staff.
Twelve total.
Twelve. And then this year, Shelby and two of the other adult staff are paid through, on what grants you received, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't know the commission had more questions, I apologize.
That's okay, we know how you operate.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, ladies.
And congratulations on such a good program.
Yeah, all right, Angela.
So, what did you guys?
Yeah, I got, I got them, yeah.
Uh, we had a little drama with the figuring out about the bond and everything, but we got that resolved, thankfully, thank you, Wes. Wes delivered, and he delivered soundly, resoundingly.
Very hard to understand, and if one person tells one thing and one person tells another.
Listen, that was, that was perfect, what you provided us.
Wes thinks, you know, he understood my frustration.
Wes will go out and find you the most obscure law opinion on earth, you know, that, that, you know, every other lawyer I know has looked for and missed.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate, because I read it one way, and people, Reeve read it one way, and
Well, and then he, and then he called Reeve and explained his way, and they agreed with him.
So, on these bids, you do have the lowest bidder, which we've already opened it, which was one seventy-five, when we do the contracts, and Wes has already written up the contract, too, so. Um, but they're all individually priced anyway, because depending on when Anthony gets the bond, so. The two things we'll need is if you got debris, it's the lowest bid, which is for Tom's tear down and take away, one seventy-five. That would be the lowest bid, um, the other thing we need to discuss is we have twenty property owners, we have voluntary consent in other property, but at this time, I don't know which twenty you guys want to allow to use voluntary demolition months, so that once you guys say do all twenty of them, or?
And so Ella, are we gonna meet?
Well, here, here's, I wanna mention something to the commission, is, I thought you was gonna mention, but I, I won't, now I'll mention it. And make sure I'm right when I say this, we only have a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars left in REAP grant, correct?
Yes, we have some houses that are coming down, we haven't paid for, but that's nice.
That after you might, that's what's.
We have a hundred and forty-six thousand for these that are.
And it's, it's a hundred and seventy-five, I was gonna recommend to, there's one that was priced, it costs forty thousand dollars.
It was a commercial property.
It was a commercial property, what I was gonna suggest is leave that out for the next REAP grant application, and that would bring the, down to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, leave us eleven thousand left, and if we found a residential, is that, correct me if I'm wrong?
So what may happen, I'll just give, so these two houses, what we have to do now is the pricing attorney's office has to do a deed search, make sure these people have the right to sign their property, that'll be something, or Wes or somebody will do. If by some chance, one of those people on the list isn't eligible because they don't fully own it or whatever, we may have to bid out another house or come back to, that'll let you know when we get closer.
Should have a couple prepared to do, just in case.
There should be more coming back, there should be more coming in also.
Okay.
And, and when I was at Meadow Bridge, I gave them all the information, and hoped that they, they said they had plenty of the people that would do it, and I said, well, if you get it in, maybe we can get something done now, but we'll process it next year if we have to.
We have about fifteen more that came in after this, so I'll definitely keep the finances, but I just wanna, you know, some of those twenty, Anthony may do a deed research and say, oh, this person is not really theirs, they're, they didn't even have a will, so.
But, but that was my suggestion, to hold out the commercial property and, and get all the rest of them.
Yes, and also on this, just side note, that eleven of them are in the city limits of Golly Bridge, but Golly Bridge did sign, um, the agreements to allow us to come in, so they have already signed it.
Okay.
That's good.
Sounds great, thank you, okay, so this, I know I can go ahead and have Anthony, except for that one, if that's.
If that's okay for the commission, I'm just.
Except for the one, um, which is the child, and I will just reach out to the property.
After looking at this list, um, if you guys don't mind, I would like to get some information from our counselor, so I would like to go into executive sessions quickly, please.
What time is it, ten thirty-five?
It looks like it's ten thirty. Bring this meeting.
We call on Mr. Lowry instead of Roma.
I wanna bring this meeting back to order, we had advice from legal counsel, no decisions was made. All right, uh, Angela, that, I guess, John, did you, are you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, is that everybody good?
I, I wanna thank everyone for answering my questions.
All right. Now, my recommendation was, we didn't have enough money to do all the, uh, applicants, so my, my recommendation was taking the one of them, that was forty thousand dollars, taking it off, and it leaves, it, we have eleven thousand dollars left after, uh, applying all this money to the, uh, the other applicants. So I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, demo, demolition and cleanup for all the applicants who sent for the commercial piece of property is forty thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
And then I'll move that we choose Tom's tear down and take away as our contractor, as the lowest bidder.
Second.
All in favor?
I think that's it.
To a adjourn?
Yeah, question to adjourn.